We're trying to get him. Oh, did we not know yet? No, he's, he says.
I'm.
Um, you're ready?
Yeah.
We're ready?
Yep.
Well, yeah, take a slide.
All right, let me see, are you ready?
All good?
Yep.
Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, October 21st meeting of the Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting into order with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, infinite.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Members present, Mike Caprillo, Chairman, Russell Blanchett, Member.
Jason Grant, Member.
Bob Curtis, Member.
Absent this evening is Tom Young, Mike Roto, and Kevin Borg. Ken will be. Okay. And I'd like to open the evening with public input. Any members of the public wish to make any comments? Hear and see and none? Um, we'll start the evening. One second. Reconvene the hearing for the Thoreau Site Plan. The hearing is a compliance hearing based on the last conditional approval. The applicant has been granted conditional approval for a site plan to construct a storage building at 16 Colby Road. The building is a proposed 60 by 80 and will store supplies for Optimum Building Systems and Management Incorporated, which is located on the adjacent lot. As storage buildings are not allowed in the Northern Commercial District, the applicant has obtained the variance from the electric field zoning board to allow the use. The building will not have water or sewer and will only be used for storage. The maximum number of employees in the building will be four. The applicant has noted that no additional parking is necessary and there will not be an increase in the number of vehicles on site. The building will be accessed through the existing parking arrigates, the proposed new gravel area around the storage building. Okay. If you could just state your name for the record, please?
For the record, my name is Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services.
Good evening.
Good evening. Renee will not be with us this evening.
Okay.
But we're hoping to, to wrap this up, so as we left it, left it, we got conditional approval. We've had one more go-round and NRPC has put down the condition of approval and sort of the status. I'm sure you all have the copy, so we'll, we'll go through those. So she, C1 has been revised to include stormwater plan and the following features, extended the, the swale. Last time we were, the swale was in approximately this area, now we've extended it to that 102 contour and then is now discharging to the left. And then the board should confirm with Town Engineer Lou Karen to confirm the stormwater plan can be adequately ensured, there will not environmental or water quality degradation or increased flood risk due to the impervious surface in excess of the 15% maximum as required by the CUP requirements of the zoning ordinance 1256-00A and Site Plan Review Regulations 155. So we have gotten a letter from Lou Karen, which I hope you all have, and I think in his, his sort of his final paragraph, he addresses that, and it is my interpretation, or I think he's saying that everything looks good to him, we're doing the right thing. So I, I think that that is addressed.
Did you add the construction detail for the stone check?
Yes, and we went back and forth, because Lou wanted the, we're showing now a stone check dam, and Lou wanted that clarified, and then I wanted to just make sure, so this is the stone check dam detail in here.
Okay. Including the gradation of the stone?
And the gradation of the stones, hillstone, quarry stone, the D-50, one of the maximum one and a half times, the D-50, and the D-50 is going to be one and a half inches.
Okay.
So that should be clarifying. The contractor should be able to go out now and get that.
And the last item Lou mentioned was the swale invert elevation was obscured by the stone check dam.
Yes.
Has that correction been made also?
That correction has been made also.
Okay.
It's still like the, so I, actually, I should say that, that correction has not been made. I kind of didn't want to make those final corrections till I came to the board, see if there was any notes or comments or anything else.
Okay.
Were going to be changes to.
For final administrative approval.
For final approval, that will be required and that will be done.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see. So the other ones are checked, complete, extend the squales we discussed, C1 revised to include landscape, landscape plan that includes fescue, we've got that on there, and fertilizer used only after initial seeding, I have a note on the plan for that. Items four through six are administrative conditions to be submitted after all other items are compliant, should be retained as condition of approval. That's the Mylar Plan Copies Professional Seals and Signature and Electronic Submission per Regulations, and also as built are required. All fees, it is my understanding, all fees have been paid up and we're all set as far as that goes. And then there's another one, the bond estimate. To be further discussed by the planning board, the plant, the board may require performance guarantee to ensure completion of the stormwater and landscaping elements. I guess I wanted to talk to the board about that. I think the board, there is, the town has ways of, there's going to be a CO that's going to be required for this project, and certainly the building inspector will have authority over this to say, nope, you haven't done it yet, no CO is going to be issued until you have completed the stormwater swale. So I would, I would request that no bond be posted for this project.
We'll hit that at the end, if you want to just go through the rest of the rest of items.
Okay. Uh, applicant has submitted, yes, we have got, we submitted our septic plan, I have a copy of the approval here, will be on file, I believe the town has a copy already, conditional approval number 2014-120133, and that will be added to the plans as well. Uh, plan note must be added to specify NHD, yeah, retain as an administrative condition, retain New Hampshire DES subsurface permit required, so we already, we have that, those are now, I'll put the condition of approval on there.
Okay.
The plan will be in the file. Okay, revise the town of Litchfield, okay, yes. Notes clarify that this is in compliance with Section 163, she wanted me to add, NRPC wanted me to add, of the site plan regulations, so we can revise that note, no problem.
Yep.
Add a note that the septic plan will require DES, I get that sort of moot now, we've got DES approval. Um, complete, complete. Applicant needs to clarify that the waves were granted to the Site Plan Review Regulations, retain that as administrative waiver, oh, because again, that was the, on note, on cover sheet 01, I just referred to the section, but I didn't say Site Plan Review Regulations.
Okay.
Again, that note will be.
Will be adjusted.
Will be corrected. Still need final okay from the fire chief. We do have, there was an email sent, I have a copy of it, if it, if it was.
Fire chief did approve everything, that's fine.
So we have a fire chief approval on there.
Yep.
So that's gone over all the changes that'll be made or required to be made.
Thank you for the information. The board addressing the bond issue, does the board feel there should be a bond set aside for this project, or is that something that the Certificate of Occupancy will be covered during the inspection?
Mr. Chairman, what is the bond specifically for?
To make sure that items are done, that they said it would be done before occupancy is allowed, but that's what the building inspector is supposed to do.
Okay.
So historic property is a storage facility for Continental, he did not have one, another project for that, did not have a bond either.
So it's, it's, it's the norm. We've done the test.
To not have, well.
To not happen.
Yes, from what I've learned, so.
I think that's what a CO is for, I mean, if you can't get a CO, you can't do anything in that building, so holding cash is cash, but CO, without a CO, you can't do anything.
Just kind of protects the town though, too, that if a portion of the work is completed, and you've got that bond to at least make sure it gets to a standard that you can leave it, you know? But historically, it sounds like you haven't required this.
Okay. So will the board to forego the bond?
Yeah, I would say so, yes.
Does that need to be a formal vote, or is that just a discussion?
Um, I think it's just a discussion.
Okay. And any further questions for the applicant? Does the board feel that he's been compliant with the items that were left from the last meeting?
Yes, clearly.
Okay. If I could have a motion regarding the compliance?
Send a motion.
An emotion regarding his compliance to the items from the last meeting.
Make a motion that they have complied with the, the issues that we required.
Is that?
[laughing].
You have a second?
He isn't complying.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Okay. Deny? Opposed? Sorry, long day. Abstained? Carries 400. And the last item would be, any of these items that were listed as administrative items on the worksheet, does the board feel that administrative items can be done directly with the applicant at town and not involve from the planning board or another visit?
I don't see a reason to bring the applicant back before us, I think he's on the right path to have a compliance set of drawings that administrative approval would be appropriate for.
Okay.
I agree.
Have a motion for that, please?
I don't want that.
Sum it up in a motion. Any further actions could be administratively handled between the town and the applicant?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
What?
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carries 400.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming back and for taking care of those items.
Great. We'll get the final question.
We do not need a Mylar.
No Mylar?
We don't record site plans.
Okay.
Oh, even better, huh?
Even better, look at that. And is the number of copies on there?
Um.
Plan copies, how many?
Four, I should do it, three, three.
Three copies?
Yeah.
And no longer need the Mylar, and I can send you a PDF of them, obviously, easily.
Yeah, okay.
Should we make a motion to strike the requirement for a Mylar, since it's?
I don't think it's in the regulations, we used to record site plans, but Kevin said there's no need.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. I like quick ones.
So, my understanding was that Bruce Mayberry wasn't coming until about 7:30?
Okay. We have other items we could take care of, and if you have to take care of your child, that's fine also.
Of course, okay.
I know you're only here for 15 minutes, but.
I haven't heard.
At any point you have to leave, that's, that's totally fine. Maybe we'll jump down to the minutes in the October 7th meeting while we're waiting for Mr. Mayberry, and everyone's had a chance to review the minutes.
Stay dry.
Any corrections from anyone?
Before? Boy isn't here.
Okay. I think you don't count.
Makes it easy.
I know they're long.
I don't recall seeing anything when I went through.
No, everything seemed, to my recollection. Jason, was there anything that you?
Okay.
Okay. Take a motion for the minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 7th, 2014.
Have a second?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Carries 301. All right.
Do you want to take a look at the town meeting schedule?
Sure.
There might be enough time to squeeze that one in.
Yep.
Might be quicker than the Mosey Family District. So, do you guys all have copies of town meeting preparations and deadlines?
Yep, she put it up on the, on the Google site.
Okay. So, what Jen was proposing was to have your meeting on November 18th, basically preparations for your public hearing, so you could finalize the draft, schedule the outreach, just kind of get ready to go. And then she basically spaced it out, so you have one a month, which is kind of a nice space and gives enough time in between to advertise. So you could have your first public meeting or public hearing on December 16th, and then that gives you a little over a month to advertise and to do your outreach and have the second public hearing on January 20th, as a ballpark timeframe. A couple other documents that Jen put in here, she had the new requirements, the deadlines for town meeting season, and then the 2015 town meeting calendar. There is a new requirement now, and she's got that in here, this has got a couple different things, but the link she has is to New Hampshire Town and City, and one of the changes is the zoning changes, if you have 100 or fewer properties affected, regardless of how many properties are in the older new district, notice each affected property owner is required, in addition to your newspaper publication and posting in a public location. So, that's just something to think about, my understanding was she was still going to go through and see if the overlay affected the over 100 or under 100. So, that's just, you know, where it's at, she hasn't gone through and done that exact calculation, but.
My guess is probably under 100, wouldn't you think? I didn't think the adjustments changed.
Jen seemed to think it was kind of close.
Hugging the hundreds?
Yeah, it's a big swath.
So, I think she was going to go through on GIS and just do a good analysis and make sure. So if it's under, you've got to do direct mailing to all the folks, over, you don't. And then she also has on here, kind of highlighted deadlines for the planning board, so, you know, she's gone through the end of, last day of the year is your last day to post and publish a notice for the first hearing and a second hearing, I mean, these are all the absolute deadlines, but Jen's backed that up, so you have a meeting in December, a meeting in January, and you know, you've got plenty of room. And it also sets it up so that your first meeting of the month is for applications, and then your second meeting of the month is a work session that you can, you know, have the hearings on. So, I think she was just looking for your thoughts on this, you know, what do you think about this sort of a timeframe?
Now, the first public hearing, would, will we have impact fees done by then? I don't know if you know that or.
I don't know.
Because that's going to the ballot, so is the first public hearing, the second public hearing, are you allowed to introduce new things in the second one that you didn't have in the first one?
Um.
Or it has to be consistent, right?
Well, yeah, I mean.
You can have only one, you can have only one hearing, so if you introduce something at the second hearing, you might only have one hearing on that item.
Okay. So if the second half of the impacts are not, impact fees are not done, we could split it in two, is it better to keep it in one and make it continuous?
I think you're better off keeping it in one.
One, okay.
Yeah.
So probably to the second meeting.
I mean, in theory, I suppose you could bring a new topic, you know, to the second public hearing, so that January 20th date could be the second public hearing for the impact fees and maybe the first public hearing for something else, but at that point, it's not going to allow you, you know, she's gotten here the deadlines for when it can allow you to have two meetings.
If everything that we have can be done in one public hearing, do we have to have two public hearings?
You don't have to have two public hearings. The danger is, if you push up against the deadline and you feel that you need to have a second public hearing, you don't have enough time for it, you can't, so.
Do it in the first one and then it overgoes the second.
Yeah, I mean, I think your safest bet is to plan on having two, have enough room for it, and then if you don't need it, you're still ahead of the game. It's easier than being in a position where you don't have the opportunity for a second hearing when you feel like you ideally need it.
And is the posting process to, the, the timeframe to post, you post both hearings and if you don't need the second one?
No, you don't post them both at the same time.
You post one.
So what's the timeframe between, like, how long is the posting?
Ten.
Ten days?
Calendar days, yeah. But it can't include the day that you post it or the day of the hearing, so in theory it's.
You post the next day after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and all the deadlines are down here, but Jen's just backed that out.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah, so, does that seem to work?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Go with that, okay.
Hello, I'm Bruce.
You too.
Good evening.
Good evening, I hope I didn't keep you waiting.
Oh, no.
No, no.
I knew you had some other business, so I took my time.
No problem at all. Welcome. Can you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's Bruce Mayberry, the company's BCM Planning LLC from Yarmouth, Maine.
Good evening. Good evening. You've been busy.
We have. Accelerating this one a little faster than part one, I'll say, a little, little bit less complicated perhaps, but, yeah, I'm just here to report back to you on the part two impact fees, we, this is a, actually a second draft that staff had an opportunity and regional planning had an opportunity to comment on the first one, we did some, a few refinements to it, including updating this to match the NRPC population and housing projections. So we've got some new assumptions in there, I think it, actually it works a little better to have some finite numbers and a, and a target year to go by instead of just a build-out assumption. So I think the, the way to, I had in mind, and I'll try to be brief going through this so we can ask questions, I think the, the issue that we're at right now is that there are obviously a lot of variables in the impact fee process. Jason told me the, the next CIP probably won't be completed till summer of 2015, which should contain both, my understanding, a shorter-term schedule, a traditional six-year timeframe, but also statements on longer-term projects. So what we're trying to do is design this so that when you have a new set of assumptions, you can substitute those in. If costs change or the variables change, we should be able to accommodate those, you know, when the CIP comes out, if it, if it makes things more specific, that's actually better. But in some of this, to start out, we, we did revise the population housing projections, that's sort of our, our assumptions about future, the extent of future development. I've kept the non-residential projections pretty much the same as they were under the road impact fee report, so I haven't adjusted anything there. I think the key thing, probably focus of the meeting tonight, might be that all of these impact fees, as you can see reading through it, depend on setting certain expectations or standards about how much facility space do you need, how much capital value would be involved in providing for the year 2040, that's our current projection. And some of this goes back, some of this I've used as standards that were assumed by NRPC in the last master plan update. A couple of them, I've recommended some changes, the staff comments where we should try to pursue some ideal standards. The problem is, there's really no, no ideal standard, they're not, they don't come down in stone tablets for us to use, unfortunately, and a lot of the so-called standards are really just recommended averages that are issued by different proponent groups that, you know, if you ask the PGA how many golf courses there should be in the United States, you'd get a somewhat different answer, but some of these ratios have been around for decades, and so I've always recommended, I think, I think Litchfield has done this in the past too, through NRPC, is, is kind of look at the ratios as a guideline, but then adjust them to, to the locality so that they're realistic. And so I think the only caution I would have in using a so-called ideal standard is that when you do that, you're setting yourself up for perhaps a big deficiency in terms of if you set your standards really high, and they're, but they're much higher than what the community's likely to support, then you start out with a big need gap. Two of the fees, the fire and police, are based on assumptions about having both residential growth and non-residential development. And so the, the basic approach there is, we look at the standards, we apply them to a base year, which I've used 2010, because that's the, probably the best population number we can get, and year 2040, and then made some assumptions about how that, the proportionality changes between residential and non-residential development, it doesn't change a lot, but the, the particular thing about public safety fees and town office fee actually, is that those are split between residential and non-residential future development. Recreation, library are, are strictly residential-oriented fees, so that those only depend on the, on the residential growth scenario. The, I think we can, if we look at the, some of the standards that are used here, I think on the town office, that's pretty much using an assumption of, that was used back in 2002, there was some discussion of staff that, well, maybe the town office doesn't need to be expanded right at the moment, maybe there will be an expansion, maybe there won't. If we use that .6 ratio, and if I, what I've tried to do is go back and look at the number of staff, and number of full-time personnel, so it's, it's really running off, off a standard of employees and square footage, if we take 550 square feet per employee, that comes out to about the .6 standard, which was your historical one. If you went to 500 square feet per employee, that would say you're just about exactly balanced with the space that you, you should have. So again, that's, there's some, there's some play there in terms of, in the assumption. I think, I guess the concern was, if, if it turns out there's nothing in the CIP later on, to, to develop more space or to take over if the police station were to be built independently, then there's, there's room for, for movement there. So that's the current assumption. The, in the fire department, there's a couple numbers I need to change in page two of the first paragraph under fire department, those numbers aren't aligned with the current population numbers, I'll just, that last sentence of paragraph one should read standard of 2.91 square feet per dwelling unit, and then 1.02 square feet per capita. So all of this will, when we do the rest of the text, we'll, we'll make sure everything lines up. I think the comment on the fire department too was that there was concern about adding in too much new capital equipment, a quint, which is a, an aerial ladder, a multi-use vehicle, would actually be replacing a current piece of equipment, that's the likely scenario. And no, no additional ambulances, it was mentioned a communication center might be added, but only if there's a federal grant, if there's a federal grant, can't charge it to an impact fee. So I took those out and we just, we just based this one on your current capital equipment inventory, assuming that that obviously will be replaced, it'll be upgraded, may change over time, but it perhaps won't expand in terms of the number of pieces. So inherently, what part of the impact fee does is it recovers a portion of that capital value, assuming that that capital value will serve the 2040 need base as well, we proportion that out, allocate a certain amount to existing, and then a balance to, to the future, and say that that capital equipment, part of that, would be chargeable to, to new development. And I've broken it out in the, in the fees, you see, what if we took out the capital equipment completely versus just look at the building only? Well, if the capital equipment comes out, the fee drops substantially, because the, the building has been, I think the building has been planned for so long in terms of an expansion that you're, you know, you've, you've gone a long way toward your, toward your future population since the original impact fees came into play. The police department, and again, we updated the fire department back in 2009 as well as the police department, so I've used the similar models here, but, but changed the population assumptions. And if we use the, in 2009 on the police department, we assumed a police department staffing, staffing ratio of one and a half officers per thousand, that came out of, I think it was an MMI study that was done for the town, for the police department on future staffing, and we used the NRPC assumption of 425 square feet per full-time officer. When you do that, it turns out, the ratio comes out to .64 square feet per, per person relative to the population, that's only slightly higher than the, the old .6 square feet per capita, so we're talking basically not much difference there at all, so those, those numbers are quite consistent. Again, the assumption there is, if you had a police department impact fee, if you expanded the space, added onto this building, or if you built a new building, it really wouldn't matter, as far as the impact fee is concerned, you're collecting on the basis of square footage and an average value. So whichever one you decided to do, the fee could be applied to, to that project. The library, I held to the standard, I, I, my understanding is, there's no specific plan yet for the library as to how large it will ultimately be. Historically, you've used a .6 square feet per capita ratio, as in the, the last master plan update. In my experience, that's, that's pretty low, I think that's conservative, so it's, I'm sure it's a safe number. Often libraries, if they have a library specialist consultant come in and look at all the programmatic needs, often they come up with something higher than that, approaching maybe one square foot per, per capita, but it really depends on, on local goals and budget money and so forth also. So I think it's, it's certainly okay for a planning standard at this point, I wouldn't be surprised if that changed, that the, that the desirable size might be bigger, but at that standard, you know, you have a decent impact fee, I think it was a few hundred dollars for a single-family home. And again, because the library is currently so small relative to the population, that means that not a whole lot can be charged to the impact fee, because you're already, according to that standard, you're 1,800 square feet behind where it ought to be today. So that's the, for the town facilities, the, the more difficult one that I'm still working on a little more is the recreation impact fee, and I think that I'm trying to nail down the exact number of fields, full, you know, lar, of full-size fields and so forth in town. In this draft inventory, I had, I originally had a larger number of fields, but then I thought my numbers must be wrong, because there were so many, and I think it went back to, I think we had, one of our meetings, I asked, I asked the board if, you know, if there are any new recreation facilities since the master plan, and just Sawmill Burke was thought my numbers must be wrong because there were so many. And I think it went back to, I think we had, one of our meetings, I asked, I asked the board if, you know, if there are any new recreation facilities since the master plan, and just Sawmill Brook was mentioned. And although, when I look back, the number of fields is a lot greater than what was listed in the master plan. So there's about five, five, a difference of five fields that I just wanted to make sure they were actually there, that they were not overlaying with other fields, you know, sometimes the outfield of the, the baseball diamond is used for soccer and that kind of thing. So-
Does it account the school facilities also as part of that calculation?
Yeah, it's, in terms of, the tradition is usually that when you count your inventory, you include the school, the count of fields and facilities in the ratio.
High school fields, since the master plan was last revised.
Right. Indoor, well, and I was looking like it's a talent hall, but they use the gym, you know, LMS for just about everything also.
Well, like Roy Memorial Field, for example, it's, had, had it down, I think it was one multipurpose field. I, I looked at aerials today, there were three diamonds there, so. I've just got to get that straightened out, maybe talk, is there somebody at the recreation commission that's, might be best to talk to, because I haven't talked to them directly?
Be like Andy Collins or John Pryne?
Or Kevin Lynch would have a handle.
Yeah, Kevin Lynch may be the easiest to access point of contact, and he's-
Okay.
Just a wealth of knowledge.
The chair.
Right.
They have that email, RC-
It's on our website.
Yeah. Will that go to-
Yeah, RC@Litchfield, Litchfield, New Hampshire.
Yeah.
I saw it on their website, it didn't have a, a name, but-
Yeah.
So if I use that, it would get this-
Go to the town website, you'll get it.
Okay. Because I've gone back and forth about it, probably driving Jason crazy with, with trying to get the, the numbers, I just want to make sure they match, so we get the right number in there. But in any event, it would appear you have a surplus of athletic fields, which is, which is good. Actually, if you have the number of fields, even if you do an adjustment, it's something like 18, and at that ratio, you've got twice your standard. So theoretically, at your current standard for total athletic fields, you've got enough fields for a town of the size of 15,000. It may not feel like it, but I mean, just when you look at that number, that's, that's what it's saying. So that, it's possible that ratio's too low, or it could be when the ratio was designed, they didn't include the schools in the inventory.
Sawmill Brook was built just a few years back with impact fees, with the intention of it being for future projected growth.
Right, okay. Very good.
So we do, we do cover ourselves well.
You did, you did a lot of expansion there, I was glad to see it, because that's, recreation is one where usually a lot of lag.
Darapon's the same, same thing. At Darapon, it was, you know, there was the one field, but now there's three there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, they did a great job redoing that.
With impact fees.
Okay.
I'm surprised to see we have a horseshoe pit. I don't even know where it is.
It's there.
It is there?
Had I known, I wouldn't have built one.
The Darapon.
No more skate park, though.
No, no more skate park.
I think the big, the big variable on the, and there's several iterations on the rec fee here. You know, back when you originally established it, the master plan came up with standards just for certain, certain facilities, and, and they were adjusted to the local experience. And so, so one of my scenarios was just based on, what if we take the master plan standards, period, for the facilities that they listed? The time the gym wasn't included in the, in the standards, but the outdoor facilities were, and the bike path. Well, the bike path standard was one and a half mi, one and a half miles of paved bike path per thousand persons. At that ratio, you'd need an additional 10 miles. Now, you only, you have two, 2.2, something like that. So if we were to-
No, all Albuquerque's a bike path now.
Everything is?
Start to finish.
Okay, well, okay, okay.
So it's one continuous.
Okay, because my information was it hadn't been extended yet, so.
Six, seven miles.
So it's the full thing, yeah, because I measured it, when we did the road fee, it was like a five-point or six-mile-
It's the entire length.
Stretch, so I, okay, that, that I didn't know.
3A to pinch.
Okay, okay. I'd asked that question earlier in my emails, and I thought the response was that it had not been, not been completed.
Three years ago, three or four years ago.
Okay, that's good. That solves a big problem.
That was punched through. Well, it made more sense because the road was very fragmented. As the road was finished, they did the bike path with the pavement-
Okay.
-with the road finishing.
There still is plans to punch Albuquerque through, down to 3A in the south end of town. So bike path will accompany that, that project if it ever gets going.
Circumstantial Highway 2.
Yeah, the original plan I saw was 3A.
Holdout Landfort.
102 makes a lot more sense.
Where's this, where, where can I, is, is this plan available somewhere? Because I was not able to get a-
I have only seen it once or twice in the years that I've been here.
Kevin Lynch would probably have it.
Yeah, Albuquerque County, the road agent has ideas.
Jackson City.
I guess the important thing is to know, you know, is there going to be more bike path in addition to that?
It would be consistently, and it would be, not even a mile, I mean, how far is it from? Like maybe half a mile, mile more until you hit 102.
Okay.
So it's not much more.
So that would be the full extent?
I assume it would be road with bike path, because that's why they've done the entire road, but that was, wasn't that federal funds? The bike path?
To finish it, yeah.
At least you know that was federal funds.
Okay.
To finish it, and we still have some.
Shovel ready it was.
It was.
Ah, shovel ready.
Yeah, but the road agent would have that information. I don't know if it's formally been presented or designed.
Jason and he are working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's another one of those things that, again, you could adjust the standard, but it made such a big difference in the numbers that it, it was just putting you into a huge deficiency.
Oh, yeah.
That'll drop, of course, when I put, if we, if we show that as completed, I mean, we'd probably say you, you still need three or four more miles under that one and a half miles per capita, per thousand person standard.
10.
Right. And I had tried backing it out, assuming that, let's say you just, you, you did just Albuquerque Avenue, that comes out of a point six something miles per thousand persons. So if you did that, you'd already have it built, you know, so that would change that scenario significantly, so. I'll see if I can chase that down. I, I guess that was the question is, you know, if, if we assume some kind of, sort of ultimate bike path number of miles, you could apply that to the 2040 population and back out, back a standard out of that.
Yep.
Instead of just taking the, you know, that, that standard ratio. So that will, that will change considerably if we, if we fix that, fix that number, because that's what was throwing the numbers all over the place, because it was the biggest so-called deficiency if we use the, the standard. The other ones are fairly small, you know, in terms of some tennis courts, you know, the tennis court standards, I've been using a ratio of a point five. We did some work in Nashua many years ago with another consultant. We came up with about point three five because the, compared it to the major cities in New Hampshire, and that's about what they averaged. If you're doing, the old standard was point nine five, and, you know, Manchester would need 100 and something courts if that were the case, so.
Do you have the tennis courts at Albuquerque? Or do you have them, because the ones at Darapon became a skate park, and now it's nothing.
Okay. I only, I'm only showing two courts, so that's the Albuquerque courts.
That'll be the ones at, at Sawmill.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Are there any other plans for doing that, or would it be sort of-
I don't know what they want to do, Darapon had two tennis courts, then it became a skate park, that got vandalized, then they took that down, and now it's just a swath of empty space. Is there basketball now?
I thought they had basketball hoops in there, but I'm hearing this from my kid.
I think I listed something, yeah.
That would be something the rec committee would know.
Yeah.
To give you an inventory, they did put basketball hoops in there or something.
Okay.
And I thought they had plans, I heard, to expand the tennis courts at Sawmill.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a bit too hard.
But my understanding was, there's no, there's no formal recreation plan written down, at least in the towns, in the towns' records that, that I know of.
Nothing we're aware of.
Okay. But the commission might have, or is it just basically ideas for-
I'm sure they have goals of things they want to try to accomplish, like Sawmill was one of them, that was one of their big ones.
Okay.
But, yeah, I would just, if they don't respond, just let me know, and I can-
All right, okay.
Look it up to someone too.
Yeah, I'll follow up with them, and maybe, it might even be worth having a, a separate session, just to, just to go over the numbers and make sure, I want to make sure I put in here what's, what's really out there. So that's the only one I was kind of, kind of going back and forth in. And the other issue was whether or not there might be a, another gym, the last master plan talked about an additional indoor gym. Talent Hall would count as one, that would give you a second, and so I worked that into some of the assumptions. You know, if you did, if the next capital improvement plan says there, there would be a second one, we had a value for it, we could, we could plug that in again. Some of the other scenarios we did, it were just, just the outdoor facilities. So the numbers that you see there would, would change quite a bit depending on what we put in for, for the, the bike path assumptions. But basically, the, the idea of this was to get, to get all of these facilities working off the same set of, of future growth assumptions at least. And so the way I've got it set up is the, the spreadsheets, if you, if you modify the standards on any given one, it will update the fee schedule and the different scenarios and so forth. So if there's any additional input you want me to test out there, we can do it. I don't think the numbers will change a whole lot, though. It really will depend on what we assume, I think, for, the ratios may not change much in, in my draft, they might when the CIP is complete. The other variable would be the assumptions about the cost per facility. And I'd put athletic fields in, I think at 150,000 per, I think that was the most recent experience, at least at the, at the newest fields. That might be a little on the high side, not all the fields are, are created equal, but, you know, going forward, I think you, you probably assume that if new fields are developed, you'd probably want them at that standard. And quite a few of these, I've tried to figure it on a, rather than, they're not all done per capita, some of them are per dwelling unit, and we adjust the dwelling units based on expected household size. And the, and then, and the residential, the non-residential is pretty much a flat fee except for public safety, where as you recall, we, we varied that based on the expected call volume for, for various uses. So I think, I probably, my next, the next step is going to be to get the recreation options nailed down a little more specifically, especially with that bike path assumption. And again, it's, it's a variable that can be, can be modified. In the rec fee options, I've just put a colored column in with the standards, and whatever we, we'll update the inventory, that will change the number of existing facilities, but the, when you plug in a new standard, again, that will adjust everything out to recompute the, the amount of the fee. Are there any questions that, and specifics, or that concerns that the board has at this point? I think that what, what may happen is I'll, I'll end up finishing the, the report, but there'll be these variables that you can adjust later on, or we can adjust together, and so that when you want to redo a new fee schedule, you know, you would have it consistent with the master plan. I was, I, I don't think it's probably best to adjust it every year. I know one of the comments I had from staff was something that could be adjusted every year as the investment perspective changes, and I, I think that's a little too frequent to just be, be hopping back and forth. I, I think you need to sort of take a, a stand and say, this is what we intend to do, and stick with it for a while, and then adjust it periodically. Because otherwise, your numbers will be up and down every year, and it's kind of an administrative nightmare in a way, because you've got, you'd have grandfathered subdivisions under the old fee, and now new lots come in, so.
How often would you suggest that it be adjusted?
I think, I think that, obviously, when, when a new CIP comes in, and if that's got some content that would influence the standards, or the dollar amount, or the number of projects, that's definitely a time to do it. You can periodically go in and adjust the dollar amounts if there's a valid, you know, reason to do so, in terms of, you know, kind of inflating those dollar costs from a baseline. On what we have here, though, I think these are so generic, I don't think they're specific enough to really adjust them using a, an inflation variable yet until something's actually built, and we know, you know, you, if you get a good number, you could stick with that, and then, and then go up. So for now, I think I would probably, you know, leave the dollar amounts alone. I think until something's actually constructed, if you keep ratcheting up the number, but you haven't really built it yet, you know, it's kind of, it's theoretically supportable, but, but it might end up being a little excessive. I think, and I, and I, I'm sorry, I don't recall what's, what the ordinance says about the updates, but a lot of the ordinances contain language saying, you know, no less frequently than five years is pretty common, and no more than once a year typically to do that. But the board really can do it anytime, anytime you see a need to do that. And in some ordinance, it talks about update, reviewing it every year, not necessarily updating, but-
And we do have that requirement here.
Okay. So, so a review might, may or may not result in a, in a change in the fee schedule or the, the way it's calculated. But I think it's, I think it's a good, somehow the institutional memory has to be kept alive in doing these things, so that somebody's always watching the impact fee, and is it, is it really related to what's going on in capital improvement planning?
Right.
So I, I would think when that new CIP comes out, would be an opportunity to, you know, if there's a good consensus and things look like a realistic set of projects, then that would be, that would be the time to really make the, any major changes.
And it sounds like the CIP team is going to have a, a report to us after the, after the March elections.
Yeah, yeah. That was my, my understanding was Jason said it probably wouldn't be completed until the summer. I don't, but I don't know the process, the exact process they're going to go through on that.
I haven't kept my finger on the pulse of that activity, so I don't know where they're at in their process.
Okay. But we'll, we'll bring it as far as we can, you know, with what we have, and then, and then when those decisions get made, I, I just think the most important thing that I tell all, all my towns that I work with is try to make it realistic, because, again, the standards can be so much higher than what we actually do, that we, we end up in this difficulty where we have big deficiencies, and then that kind of implies that has to be done without impact fees. So if you have a scenario where you get to raise two and a half million dollars to fund the existing deficiencies in order to get half a million in impact fees, then you, you kind of have to think about how that works, you know? There aren't any impact fee police out there probably to, to say you did it, you know, it's not being done wrong, but I mean, there, there have been challenges, obviously, you know, on impact fees, so that's something to think about.
Is there any guidance tonight that you need from the board for any further work that you have?
I guess, I guess unless you, I think going back to one, there's one table here I guess, I guess feedback, I was curious about, one, the board's feeling about the, the magnitude of the fees, if they look reasonable, if you thought they were, if you just, the gut feeling was they were high, they were low. And then to maybe take a quick look at table two on page five, that was, the table two on page five is a, is just a comparison of some of the standards that have been or could be applied on, on the town office, the fire station, police station, library, and for the recreation, I just showed the 2002 original standards for the facilities that were, were included in the, in the table that you did at the time. So the, the range of assumptions here in terms of the spatial standards for buildings of town office, fire, and police, they're not all that far apart, really, in terms of the supposed deficiencies that they represent, or how much would be attributable to new development. But again, so it's, it's a matter of whether or not those numbers maintain a certain reasonableness, I guess, after you get, get down to, say you have an actual library plan, but, but they're looking at a 10,000 square foot library instead of 6,000. So again, that, that, that would be something major, but, but things stay proportionate, so they will tend to adjust out, and I don't think the dollar amounts will necessarily be, be wildly different.
Does it hurt that we don't have a recreation plan, or like a formal town-written policy?
It's always better to have that. I think the, I mean, the master plan kind of fulfilled, in your community facilities section, you know, talks about the, you know, basic needs, talks about long-term needs, and then it uses the recreation standards to sort of theorize about how, how many would you need if you applied standard X, Y, or Z. But, yeah, especially, I mean, anything that there's, yeah, it would be, it would be ideal to have that. How many towns have recreation master plans? Not too many, that I've encountered. The, the large cities do, some of the bigger towns might, I don't see too many usually, but-
Not even a master plan, but just some, would it have to be, is it all or nothing? Like either it's a master plan, or just some guidance that's given beyond?
Yeah, I mean, what some, what some communities have done, if they have, let's say, they have certain pieces of land where they anticipate expansion, for example, I don't know if Sawmill Park can handle additional facilities, but if someone, if you'd had a, say, a landscape architect come and look at, well, how much could we put on this piece of land? What, how would you lay it out, you know? And I don't know how developable the whole parcel is, but if you had certain sites and you master planned the site and theorized about how many different kinds of facilities could go on here, if that were coupled, say, with a town recreation survey, what do you want for the future? People always want more, but sometimes those are useful. People always want more, but sometimes those are useful as guidelines.
Until they find out it's not free.
Right. But I think one thing that's helped me, I mean, a few places I've gone have done sort of some, you know, some general planning for specific sites, and then said, okay, this is our, or spoke, focus on one particular park and say, this will, this is going to be our central park, and we're going to consolidate most of our recreation facilities here. And here's how it would lay out, you know, over a period of 10 years. It's a development plan. It's like a site, it's a site plan, really, for recreation.
On the grant work we did last year, didn't, wasn't some recreation items on the, we had people fill out the map and what we'd like to see, and there's more bike paths on there, and there were some things with the river and river access and stuff like that.
And we got some great feedback from the community about recreational desires. We could certainly refer to that and share that with the rec commission.
Would that, would that assist you at all? Well, it's just a definite form of from the town, though, so probably shouldn't be using it than that you do.
Was it, was it a town, was a town survey that, and you, somebody wrote up the results?
Community planning grant last year, so it was, where do you want to see the community and...
Yeah, I mean, if a report...
Recreation was a big part of it.
If a, if a written report came out of it or any statistics, I'd be glad to look at it and reference it. It wouldn't form the standards, but it would at least give a direction.
Is there something?
It's not a written report, but the statistics, Jen should have the statistics, I think.
Did you leave a note to have Jen forward to Mr. Mayberry, which she, I know there was a summary of the results from last year. I don't know if it's on our website still, or...
Okay, the summary from the CPG.
Yeah. Yeah. Also, we're looking at that. In terms of the schedule, where are we for finalization? Because we're looking at town meetings, and the December 16th is be the first public hearing. So obviously, we'd need things done by November 18th.
Right, right. That's doable.
Or begin December.
That's doable. In terms of this, I mean, whether this becomes a schedule you decide to adopt, you know, I think it would probably be an interim kind of schedule until the CIP comes along. But certainly, we'd have a, what I need to do with this report, I've just keep, kept this to the bare bones just to show you the central assumptions and what the outcome is. But for each of these, I need to write up a narrative that describes what it is, why we did it, why we made these assumptions, and make sure that...
If it's interim until the CIP is done, then how is that affected with the impact fee on the ballot, then? Meaning, it references the CIP and the actual document.
Right. You shouldn't, you shouldn't have to have an impact fee on the ballot unless you're changing the ordinance itself, I think, because the fees themselves are something the board should be able to adopt.
We're combining all the impact fees into one document, so that's going to be on the ballot, instead of having a separate...
Oh, you have the school, right, right.
Yeah, we're going to put it into one. So maybe this is not part of that, I'm not sure.
Right, right, right. I forgot about that.
Or we're combining them into one.
Combined ordinance. I remember working with Jen on that, too.
Yeah, so that would be on the ballot this year. That's why we had the public hearing.
Right. And I guess the question is, I mean, I think in the past, you've had the fee schedule, I can't remember if it was part of the ordinance or if it was a standalone schedule.
It's a standalone schedule.
It is, okay. So if it stays that way, you shouldn't have to have a ballot on the dollar amounts. That's something the board ought to be able to adopt independently.
So it's a philosophy of...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, all the ones I've worked on, I've always recommend, don't put the, don't put the fees in the ordinance, because every time you change it, you've got to have the town vote on every dollar change. And that's how almost all of them are done in New Hampshire now. So I think, yeah, I think that...
So we don't only need this for the public hearing, that's only the town-school combination, which we've already completed.
Right. I think, to me, that's an administrative consolidation of ordinance language, just to, because they, there's so much commonality between the two. I think, I think in the early days, it was, there was a concern about, you know, not mixing town and school. But I think now, we kind of see it as, okay, it's a town function to collect impact fees. The only place they can go for school is a school, so it kind of is sort of a moot point. Just looking at Page 6, knowing this is going to change, it's probably a reasonable representation of the fees I would expect we'd come out with. I don't see a lot of big changes. I'm not, recreation is going to be somewhere in the range shown here, but I don't know if the board had a feeling for, you know, if these look reasonable, higher than expected, lower. I'm just, I was just curious on how the levels struck you.
When you're looking at fire, you're looking, is ambulance services still contracted out for the complete growth of the 2040?
That's my understanding, that there was not going to be foreseeable future, a town ambulance service. So I did not, I cut it back from, you know, the original one we did a few years ago, assumed that, that, at least that equipment would come into play. So now we've taken that out. So it's a little lower than what would have been under that. Typically, I mean, fees for police and town offices are typically not very high, so these are not unusually low numbers. The library is probably as high as it can be, given the size, the size of the library at the standards we're showing. I mean, I've, those go, the ones I've looked at and worked on, probably 500 to 600 have been the maximum. And those are for larger, you know, larger library spaces per capita. The recreation fees are kind of aligned with what you'd find maybe in Bedford and Lebanon, where there's kind of a robust recreation activity, I would say. So those are, I won't, I wouldn't say they're on the high side. I'd say they're comparable to communities that do, do a lot with recreation.
Do we have to pick one of these to go through, like Fire A or B or Rec ABC?
Yeah, I think at the time, when you decide to adopt the fee, I wanted to show them all. And then what you could do is, as we did in the last go-around with the roads and the schools, is deliberate and then determine, you know, this will be our fee schedule. But it would all be documented in the report, so you could, you know, you could choose one or the other.
And why would you exclude the capital equipment values if we have a CIP going also? Like, wouldn't you want to include capital equipment?
I would. I mean, we could take B out of the picture completely.
I was curious, just asking a professional thing and just...
Yeah, it's just a question of, you know, this, this, some, sometimes people will argue, well, capital equipment, you know, the statute says capital facilities. Well, is a fire truck a facility or isn't it? Well, you can, you can pick your dictionary, and you'll find that facility can, can mean, you know, something, capital equipment. It's, to me, fire is a little different. I don't really, I don't usually include them in police or anything else, or roads or anything. But fire, it always seemed to me that often the, the equipment has a higher value than the buildings that house them. And they're the major instrument used for firefighting. And to take them out probably doesn't, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to take them out of the picture. So I think they fit. I've looked at some other fire fees from other parts of the country, and almost always, the, the equipment is, is pretty central to it. Otherwise, you'd just be looking at the building, which would be pretty, pretty minimal. So, but if someone were to argue, well, no, that's not a facility, that, that would be the board's decision. If you feel it should not be included for some reason, or I could, we could just simply have a fire fee and not, and not go into the alternative. I like to calculate it both ways, because one thing that's come up is the, is sometimes the issue of, okay, if you have capital, if you have equipment included, then somebody will say, well, what if we don't build the building? Can we just use it on equipment? And I've said, well, you could if you proportion it out a certain way, so I'll put that in the report, too, so that...
You could almost make the argument, though, that anything that's cap, a capital expenditure with a life expectancy of, you know, that you can depreciate, or, in other words, if you can't expense in one year, you have to depreciate over a couple of years, then it becomes capital, and then you start creating impact fees for everything under the sun, because quite honestly, a lot of that equipment is expensive. And it's capital expenditure in real terms, as far as, you know, the world, you know, and how, and how accountants and attorneys make you do these things, right? I know that I'd never pass muster through auditors trying to capitalize expenses and/or...
Oh, right, right.
Or going the other way, or capitalizing regular expenses.
Right.
So that's why it's difficult for me. I mean, while I can understand the argument that says, you know, maybe, maybe a police truck or a fire truck is, you know, that's the main service it provides, right?
Right, right.
But is, is it facility? You know, I went and read quite a bit about what's considered facility, and it's capital facilities. It's facility. That's, otherwise, it would be equipment, the word, or the statute itself would say, and associated equipment and/or, you know, because at that point, again, where's the line? You would just furnish your fire, your fire life safety people with all the equipment they need through the capital improvement plan.
Of course, if you, you know, if you're doing something like you're building a school, I mean, that entire expense is usually included in the, it's part of the construction, including the furniture. So, you know, that's, that's been included, really, in, in school fees and the full expense of outfitting something.
That's the point. You're building a fire station for the town, including maybe all of the trucks. Boom, boom. A one-time, you're done, right? Just like a school. You wouldn't then subsequently go to a CIP for desks.
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm not advocating that, but, right.
But that's the point. You would outfit your fire station with all the accoutrements that would belong there.
Right.
Like, you know, I couldn't even begin to guess, but a fire station, the shell is one thing, but a fire station would include a kitchen, right? So you'd outfit the kitchen, you know, and/or sleeping quarters, you know, if you're, you know, building that.
Sure. Police have gyms and training equipment and training rooms and so forth. So, I mean, I consider all of that something that's impact fee assessable. But what I, what I wouldn't do is go through the, down through the CIP and say, well, we're going to buy a new snowplow. So we'll somehow charge a fee for, I don't even know how to do that, so I guess I'd stay away from it. But, but, yeah, I mean, it's one, it's the one, I think it's the one exception to the rule where I feel like you could stretch that definition of facility to include a truck or a major capital equipment. If you shop for definitions in enough dictionaries, I think you can find one that we'll, we'll talk about. Facilities can be anything that enables, anything that facilitates a service or action. So I don't think it, I haven't seen too many done without the capital equipment in it, you know, at least for the, for the fire departments. Because without that, you really don't have the service at all.
Well, no, and again, I could understand it. Like, for instance, we have one fire station, you know, and that's one thing. We have, you know, X number of fire trucks. But if you were going to build an entirely new one, let's say, you know, which is what, I think, the whole, the one in the south end, well, that has no equipment. You're going to have to get equipment.
Have to, right.
You need trucks.
But that's my point. If you're going to have two fire stations in our town, then obviously, you need something in it.
Right, right.
Right? That's an initial outfitting of...
Right, right. And some here, I mean, it depends on what you do, too. I mean, there's some where the, I've seen some where you build a new substation, and you just redeploy the equipment into the two, two locations, so you don't, the equipment doesn't necessarily change. But, and some where you'll, you'll add a basic, you know, some basic apparatus to either end.
Well, that would be the growth, wouldn't it? I mean, if you're legitimately growing to where you need another fire station, you would argue that you need the vehicles to handle. In other words, if you had competing fires, who gets the...
That's right, that's right. And you need reserves, and you need, you need to be able to respond sometimes to multiple incidents and so forth. But I think the, I think as, as long as the capital value is there, it's going to serve new development, whether it's in a single consolidated station or two, you know, two separate stations. So, I mean, the impact fee itself isn't really going to be that much concerned about how many stations. It's really, you know, can we assume this is enough space and this is the equipment that we have? Yeah, I haven't seen, I haven't, I don't, I don't think I've come across too many arguments about leaving out, you know, saying, leave out the fire trucks, because, but I have seen some cases where, you know, constructing the station is put off and put off and put off, and just keep buying trucks. And then all the impact fees go to the trucks. Well, it was originally assumed that some of the impact fees would go to expand the building, and it didn't happen.
Yeah, I think, my understanding that, I think you hit on growth. Now, if you, if you get a new truck to support growth in a town, it's impact fee related versus, well, this truck's old and I have to replace it now, it's not impact.
Well, that's maintenance of existing facility versus growth-related necessity.
Yeah, and I think, but, but I, but I think what I'm saying here is that if, if, if it's true that you, this two and a half million dollars worth of apparatus that you have is all that you're going to have, and that you'll gradually, that value will increase as, as you roll over the equipment, you get new and better pieces of equipment, that there's no way that's not going to serve new development. It has to. New development's not going to be, you're not going to take that capital equipment and say, no, we're not going to go to that new house up there, because this is just for us. It's all going to benefit. So I don't, if, if the fleet isn't going to expand, that value is still there to serve, to serve the whole town. So I think you can, I think you can recover some of that value, not all of it, obviously, but, but some portion of it. I think here, it's only, you know, 15 or 20% of that might be attributable to, to serving new development. But that's a case, it goes back to your other question. If you were to, if you were to add capital equipment to that inventory, then we want to go back and add it on to the equipment schedule. And then you could recover some portion of that piece.
Well, I think that's the important part, is that there's two, in my head, I don't know how they're hearing it, but there's two different parts. There's fully funding it and then attributing a smaller piece to the growth that happened beyond, so if we bought a truck 10 years ago, paid for it, then whatever growth in 10 years, whatever, you know...
Yeah, maybe it's 15%.
Whatever that piece is, that's what we're talking about, funding through impact fees and not the entire cost of, of a truck.
Exactly, exactly.
It's just a matter of understanding how much that is.
Right, because I think typically, you're not going to build up enough impact fee, you know, to buy a million-dollar vehicle, anyway. I mean, you're going to be doing it piece by piece. I think that, as we talked before, the best way to think about the impact fee is a recovery process of what you've already invested.
But that's still difficult, because you've still got to have a million-dollar, you've got to buy a million-dollar piece of equipment. And what happens is you kind of put it off and put it off, and then you don't, and then you're beyond six years.
Yes.
And those fees are gone, that you've collected. So it's not, and now there's no growth, so it's not like you're collecting more.
Yeah, right. It's just a steady state sort of, sort of thing, where, yeah, you might buy a piece of equipment, you might not. I think if we were to, I mean, if you were to take this impact fee, like the first iteration we had, and we say, okay, we're going to add to the existing inventory another million-dollar piece of equipment. Well, now you've gone up, that's another third added to the capital value. Now only a portion of that's attributable to new development. I say new development instead of growth, because that's what the statute says. Just technically, you can have new development and not have population growth. But the, the, when you do that, you kind of lard up the fee basis. But then you take the risk that you never acquire it, like you, like you were saying.
Well, and we have a bad habit in our town of doing that. We're collecting, you know, we collect impact fees, and we just don't build nothing. You know, because we can't afford the other piece.
That's it, that's right.
See, so, yeah, it's nice to collect that 15%, but we're never going to find...
But you're not going to do the other part, right. Yeah, and that's, that's the bind a lot of communities get into, especially over a long period of time. We kind of forget what the basis was for doing it in the first place. And so the fee becomes kind of institutionalized, and you collect it, and then... But I think, I think lately, there's been more of an eye toward, you know, that six-year rule and refunding, you know, where necessary. That's always the safety valve, I guess, if you, if you turn around and, but I think, I think most of this seems like it would be fairly consistent with a reasonable level of expenditure without, you know, making too many grandiose assumptions about, you know, what's the year 2040 going to look like? If we were to, if we were to assume huge increases in every, every facility, then it would be...
But even at that, 2040, so you're looking at six-year chunks. So to me, there's no point looking at 2040, because you're never going to, unless we get a sharp...
Right.
Increase in, in development to where we collect a whole bunch of fees that we can pay for something in six years. Forty years, or 20, 24, 26 years, you're talking, you know, six chunks of six years, right? Or four chunks of six years. You never get enough money buying it.
I know. I think, I think with the, things like the recreation fee, I mean, there's enough there that you've got surplus fields, let's say. So I don't think that one's a problem. You've got, you've made that investment. So you've got some surplus in terms of, you know, being able to recover that. The difficult ones are, you know, town office isn't too bad. You've got pretty good facility space. Police is kind of on the cusp, and fire is way behind, and library is way behind. So on fire and library, you know, it's just, the situation just kept perpetuating itself, that the station was never expanded and no new station was built within six years, because it's already been 20. Then, then maybe it's time to refund that, at least the part related to the building, because it just isn't happening. And as you remember, we talked before, I mean, the impact fee can, can be a recruitment fee, so that if you, in the sixth year, if you bond for something or you start to build it, then, I mean, you can recover at that point. Right, even though, even if it's a long-term project.
You know, but even if you're buying, you know, you got to get it passed the vote. You got to say, all right, we're going to, we're going to go build a fire station. It's going to cost us $20 million. It's gonna cost us twenty million dollars.
Right.
And impact fees is a hundred thousand, which means we're gonna pick up the rest of people. I, I just don't see that happening.
Yeah, I mean, the impact fee shouldn't be, is never gonna be the reason somebody's gonna vote for a project.
Oh, I, I, not for a reason to vote for, but it's certainly the discussion of why we should go build something because we wanna use the money up.
Oh, right, right.
Because it's there. I mean, I hear it all the time, especially on the school side. Well, we've got these impact fees, so we're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna lose those. Like, it's their money to, you know, we better spend it or, you know, find something to spend it on where instead of, you know, we have a need, let's make a plan. Let's sell it to the community so that we can offset these costs. You know, in technology or whatever, whatever capital infrastructure you're trying to make.
So, so the next capital improvement plan, though, is gonna be so good, see, that it's gonna
Yeah, fortunately, it's very
It'll be aligned implicitly with reality, so we won't have that problem.
Sometimes, you know, instead of something useful that we can
It is, yeah. I, I think there's a lot of places where it was kind of a, well, at, at one point in time, you know, to do any kind of, when growth management was more popular, to have growth management, you had to have a CIP. So towns would whip out a quick list of, here's, here's the things we're gonna buy, a road grader, a couple of trucks and, and that was, that was it. So some of the, some of it's, I, I, I think it's taken more seriously here than most places. And the CIPs that the Regional Planning Commission works on certainly are much more detailed than, than that. So I think, I think that a lot of what I, what I see is pretty good planning. You know, the very small towns will just do a pro forma kind of thing to get through the minimum requirements. And sometimes it's not even a plan, it's just, like you say, it's a list. And it, it doesn't, it doesn't tie in with projected growth or existing needs or, or anything. It's just a
Wishlist.
It's a wishlist.
It's a wishlist. Instead of, you know, holy cow, we're gonna have, you know, a thousand new kids in the district or something. What are we gonna need to support that?
Right. I mean, technically, when you look at the, the statute requires that you have a CIP in order to have impact fees, but it never really ties the two together literally. I mean, you, you, you do not have to, in fact, it's very rare that you, that that happens is where the CIP is the basis for the impact fee. Because CIPs usually don't address, very few, if any, have I seen where the CIP really does what we do here is try to break it up, well, what's the existing need versus the, the long-term need? It's great if you can do that as part of the process, but I've, I've seen that very rarely, you know, done in these. If it were done, then the CIP would be the lead document and the impact fee would just work off that. But as a practical matter, I think you have to look out longer term to know what the, especially applying these things like recreation standards.
Very good. Any further questions, Mr. Ray Barry?
Okay, well, let me see, the next iteration will be, what is your feeling about leaving the, the building only in for the fire department versus, I mean, in this schedule? Should we continue to show that as a separate? I'm gonna calculate it anyway, but I mean, it's a matter of whether we show it
A versus B?
Yeah.
Four things, I personally think the fire trucks should be included in it, but that's
Yeah, I tend to agree.
To include capital equipment.
If we're going to collect a fee for offsetting development, we need to fully offset what we're, we're spending for the development, including the apparatus inside the building, because the building
Yeah, you can't fight a fire with a building.
Yeah, exactly.
You need a truck to fight a fire.
Right.
So I think you wanna cover that.
I, I, I think I'd agree if we were, if we had growth to where we were building another building and we had to outfit it. But I don't believe that's necessarily, necessarily what the point is. And so if the CIP came out and said, we're gonna have a north station, a south station, and we're gonna have, you know,
As opposed to building a new one and closing the old one.
Right, right. I, 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 I might support that, but I, and again, I, I know you, anybody can argue anything. Any attorney can argue whatever they want. I just, I guess I'm using my own standard, which is, I've read a lot about it and nowhere have I found anything definitive that says equipment is part of that. Now, again, it is when you're saying, we don't have, or like, for instance, we didn't have a high school, right? So we built a high school, everything included, 'cause we don't have one. You know, or growth has pushed us to a point of, of needing a whole new fire station, you know, on the south end. Well, you gotta, you gotta outfit it. I just don't know if that's where we're at yet, so
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
I'm not prepared to say that, you know, all, you know, fire trucks are part of that. Whether or not we need them or not is, is not the point. If we need a fire truck, in my opinion, we go to the community and say, we need a fire truck.
Right.
We'll go buy a fire truck.
Yeah, we get a bond and we get a fire truck.
That's right, we go bond a fire truck, yeah. So I just don't
Sure, you, you wouldn't be able to rely exclusively on impact fees anyway to do it. It's just a matter if you wanna recover a small portion of that
Right.
In the fee.
You don't bond the full hundred percent, you bond
Yep, whatever, eighty-five percent, whatever, whatever that amount is. But I just, I just don't know in my head if I can rationalize
Yeah, okay.
Equipment in that fashion.
Well, let me try to, when I write it up, I'll try to, what I try to do usually when I'm writing about fire, I, I try to provide a rationale for it, at least from my perspective. And, and you can decide what to do, what to do with that.
And to me, recreation, even A, just seems high. One thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the lowest of the three.
Yep.
'Cause when you compare that, that's almost, that's the same as Fire A, Police and
Right.
Well, Fire A and Police combined equals recreation. Again, Albuquerque won't be in there, that'll be stricken, so that number will go down.
Right, I mean, I think you won't have, and it will, it really will depend on the standard we apply more than anything. If it's whatever, you know, if we add on beyond Albuquerque Avenue additional miles, it'll probably, it should make it lower. I mean, it's, it's the standards that are driving
Yep.
This and the balance of, between the deficiency.
And that number was calculated based on a large deficiency?
Yeah, yeah. I think the, yeah, I think that will come down. I think the other thing that's driving it is, I mean, we, I may be a little bit high on the cost per field. But that's what it was, I, I believe, for Sawmill Park. But that has good parking and I think some of the other fields, there's some, some fields that are sort of in neighborhoods, they don't appear to have parking lots and support facilities and so forth. So I'll, I'll take another look at that because we might be a little too high on the, you know, the per field. But I know when I did, I did one in Salem many years ago and we had actual costs, you know, for fields that had been built. So we had, you know, good numbers on that. And even then, it was like a hundred and thirty thousand per field, I think, with, of course, that included parking and
Was the one fifty given to you by the, the town?
No, I just looked at the, my understanding was the, the expense of doing the Sawmill Park was around three hundred thousand dollars. I don't remember the exact figure, but two fields, and that's, that's where I came up with that. It was based on that most recent park. But again, that does include some additional parking, roadway and so forth that perhaps, you know, is not the case in most of the, most of the facilities.
I don't know if it's worth mentioning, but there's professional publications like Marshland Swift Valuation Services, which detail costs for all kinds of specific construction
Yes.
Fields and so on and so forth, and breaks it down by a number of different ways that you might wanna take a look at if you have access to that.
Okay. Yeah, I do, I get the RS Means Manual every year, just square foot costs, and it gives you, you know, a big range. In some places, I've, I've got some actual examples on like fire stations, police stations that I rely on, where we have pretty good, you know, pretty good actual costs. The ones that are more iffy are the recreation facilities, 'cause those are done all different ways. Sometimes, you know, you have a, a full-size irrigated field with grandstands and so forth and parking. And the next one you do is just built by somebody's relative that's got the excavation equipment and, and so they come out very, very low cost. So those are the harder ones to get costs on. So let me see if I can come up with something that will be justified anyway. But I think the, I think things like the courts, those are fairly, fairly standard, I think. You know, average court space, playgrounds are based on the range I've seen from, from actual construction. But I mean, it's hard to generalize playground equipment of different scales and sizes.
Fairly.
Yeah, so we try to take an average value that's defensible. But again, it might be a little bit high on the field space. But again, that's adjustable. And I think we'll, what I thought I would do, too, is when I write this up, is try to talk, if you want me to, to try to talk about a little bit about the refund issue and what, what the money could, could or should be spent on and, and those kinds of issues, to go into that a bit. I think, as I remember, the town was looking for some guidance on, on that. Wouldn't necessarily be a laundry list, you know, do this, don't do this, but just some
Procedure.
Just general principles.
That was great, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much, very detailed.
And that, that November deadline you mentioned, is that, that's for the ordinance?
That's for town meeting, that's for
Oh, okay.
Well, that's for
So we'd still be okay? Yeah, I, I would expect to have the next iteration to you before that anyway, but
Okay.
So you'd have some idea if that question comes up, you know, how much would the fees be changing? Although for the ordinance, it shouldn't, it shouldn't matter.
It's not gonna be in there?
We hope.
I'll make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for the help, I appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great evening.
I appreciate the extra information on the rec, too. That's my, that's my elusive piece, right?
Google Maps Satellite View must be your best friend.
Actually, I did take a look at Google Earth, just to look at
It's just, yeah, I mean, that's
There they are.
It's never existed before and that's a great way to do it.
And some of them aren't, aren't really demarcated, like some of the, the baseball fields are very clear and the soccer fields are very clear. But there's a few that are just, you can tell there's field space there, but you can't really tell exactly what it is.
Yep.
A little more informal, so we'll nail that down and
Very good.
Go on to the next, thank you.
Have a good night. And the next item on the agenda was multifamily overlay district.
Yes, there's
A good old friend, multifamily.
So I think there's three documents to take a look at. There was fairly minimal updates on Jen's part. So the actual page from the zoning ordinance, looks like the only thing Jen actually updated was the adopted date to 2015. And then she did verify in section 525.02, the district's boundaries, that the descriptions that were in here were still consistent, you know, to reflect the revised zoning map. And she confirmed them since last time and they look fine, to leave it the way it is.
Okay.
That was the only, the only issue on the, on the zoning ordinance. On the district boundary map, it again, didn't require any modifications to reflect the revised zoning. So it's just, I think what you guys have looked at previously, so that's consistent still. And then the last thing was just to take a look at the multifamily district overlay, the outreach text. She deleted any language that was relevant to the calculation of the district area and estimates of development potential. And this is kind of what she's got here, and this was the sample, you know, summaries for outreach. So I don't know if you guys have any concerns with this or you wanna kind of take a look at it for the outreach text? She had a short paragraph and then, you know, medium-length bulleted excerpt. I guess it depends how you intend on disseminating the information and are you looking for Jen to kind of play a role in that?
I think we're gonna do a stuffer in the HLN, the, the town paper.
Okay. And will it be the other ways of getting the word out, too? Or you think just in the, will the focus be the town paper, you wanna put it on the website?
I think it's, it's still on the website? It was on for last time. We'd refresh it. Yeah, on the town website, definitely. Cable access, Mr. Cable here.
Certainly, I'd be happy to put up a couple of informational slides on the cable slide deck.
Okay, so you'll
So it'd be enough for a front and back stuffer to go out. And so probably, this is great, but a little more information probably, front and back. So I think we had it from last time.
Is it front and back, like an eight by, eight and a half by eleven?
Yeah, yeah. And I think last time we did a flyer, didn't we?
Yeah.
Last year?
Okay.
So, and then Jen wrote, made it, so
Okay.
We just update that one.
Sure, I'll have a
And make it, make it more current.
Okay. Is there anything else you need her to do for that?
No, we have time, too, 'cause that's not gonna be going in until, obviously, right before the elec-
Right.
Yeah, so
Will it be December?
Well
We have money set aside for it this year, but
Which hearing, well, you have to take this to hearing, right? Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think what you've actually gotta take to the hearing is the zoning ordinance. I mean, this would be the additional, but, you know, before you have
Right, it wouldn't be born until March, so
I thought the flyer was more for the March election to get the word out in March.
All right.
We do have the email, the list of people that did the committee planning grant last year that we could always send out to people, 'cause they're very well-connected and that would include businesses, too. And that was a mass email list we had from last year.
Do you have that, Joan, does Jen have that?
I have it.
Okay. Okay. Any other additions to information on here? Or is this like, I guess if you did it last year, it's probably somewhat
I think the last one was great, yeah, it's very, covered a lot of the areas we needed to. And maybe if you could ask her in the site, the multifamily section of the Google site, if she could just throw on there all the collateral we used last time? Just so we could all refresh our memories on what it looked like and what was on there.
Okay, so just add all the information you had that was on the site?
Yeah, the outreach stuff from last time, which would've been the flyer and a couple of the things that we had.
Sure. Okay.
Now, we do the flyer, the cost of the flyer, I think you mentioned was three, three hundred something? You, you emailed me a while back.
Yeah.
Obviously, the
The last year came out of the grant.
Okay. We have money in the budget this year, but obviously, we're not gonna be spending the money this year.
Well, we can encumber the money.
For next, to put it towards next year, okay.
We have money off this year.
Okay. So as we get closer, if you could put it on a punch list of, I think you gave me the quote and the price for the copy and then, and to give it to the HLN.
Okay, I'll look that.
One other option, I mean, if that kind of exceeds the budget you're looking at, I'd seen something that came around recently, just that the post office is offering like a cheaper sort of route for just the direct mailing. I don't know if it ends up being
Yeah, we
Less expensive?
I'll check with Jason, I know he did look at that last year.
Yeah, it had a new name. I seen it, it was something new that I saw recently. I don't know if they just rebranded it or it was slightly cheaper, but it just might be something worth considering